Okay, we are called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, May 2nd, 2022. I would all ask that you rise for the invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we begin the second year of those elected into office last year on the City Council, we are ever mindful that this has been a very, very busy year for those who just joined the City Council or who have been here for a while, and it doesn't look like things are going to let up anytime too soon. But we are ever thankful for the outstanding staff that is here to support us and for the community out large, at large, that is out there in most instances doing very positive things and very supportive things of the community in general. So we just ask for a special appreciation of that blessing as we go forward. As always tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on the foreign soils in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Tonight, we ask for the City Council to have vision and understanding and appreciation and in-depth reflection as they go about acting and voting on the issues before us, knowing that in their hearts and minds, each member is here to do what is in the very best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Miller, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rizzato?
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Saron? Vogelsinger?
Here.
Twelve of fourteen.
Let the record reflect that we have twelve of the fourteen members of the City Council present and participating in the meeting, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four is the meeting reminder, asking everybody if you're going to speak tonight to please speak into the microphone because this meeting is being televised on BATV and will be rebroadcast on a couple of occasions following it, and so we need to have everybody be able to be understood in a clear and concise manner. Moving to item number five, items to be moved, added, or changed in tonight's agenda. Do we have anything?
Your Honor, just on the consent agenda, items C and D typically go under the approval section, so I'll read it as such.
All right. Moving then to item six, which is the consent agenda, and Alderman, Chanset, you're going to handle this tonight?
Yes, indeed. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole Minutes for February 15th, February 22nd, March 1st, March 15th, March 22nd, and March 29th, 2022; Plan Commission Minutes for February 16th, March 16th, 2022. For approvals, the April 29th, 2022 payroll in the amount of $1,034,978.42. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $2,463,500.94. The Cow Executive Session Minutes for February 8th, February 15th, February 22nd, and March 1st, 2022. Resolution 22-50, authorizing execution of a contract with Era Valdivia Contractors, Inc. for the 2022 Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project for an amount not to exceed the budget amount of $150,000. Resolution 22-53-R, approving not to exceed $69,627 cost proposal provided by ComEd for the SCADA circuit upgrade to replace AT&amp;T phone line that read meter readings at both the Northeast and Southeast substations. And Resolution 22-51-R, authorizing execution of a one-year contract with the Acres Group for the 2022 Westside Property Maintenance. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Kirk calls the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
The consent agenda is approved by a vote of twelve yes, no, no, two absent. Okay, moving to item seven, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening who wishes to address the City Council? Doesn't look like it. Okay, moving to item number eight, which is the proclamation for the National Public Works Week, May 15 through May 22. Alderman Chanset, do you have this?
I do have a copy of it, and I accidentally printed it out in full color. It looks gorgeous.
All right, well, go ahead and present it. Then I had given it to Alderman Beck in case you weren't here to do it, but you're the man who gets this, so go ahead.
Indeed. Your Honor, our proclamation, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, water, wastewater, and electric, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th, the 22nd, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of Batavia. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life on this second day of May 2022. Signed, Mayor Jeffrey D. Shelkey. Your Honor, I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Beck for the approval of the proclamation as read. Any further conversation in the council? Kirk call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Proclamation is approved, and we're very honored tonight to have Gary Home, our Public Works Director, here. Gary, congratulations on a great job, and we appreciate all the good stuff Public Works does. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, summer, winter, fall, you do it all, so you want to make any comments?
Very grateful, I can thank you, and again, thank you to the mayor and council, and really thank you to everyone in the Public Works Department for their hard work and dedication, as the mayor said, 24 hours a day, all year long. Very much appreciated all their efforts. This week, we're hosting the third grade tours at our building. We have all the third graders come in from every class throughout town. Last week, our PPS folks spent time packaging trees, so we'll be sending tree saplings out to each class. And on May 16th, at 10:30 a.m., I'll be going up to the library for the annual Truck Tales event. Happy that it is back and in person this year. We'll be out in the reading garden behind the building. We bring over a snowplow and preschool set. Really, really enjoy Truck Tales. I read the same story every year because it's a great Public Works story, but there's one page on that book that every year I have to tell them is not true. There's a page in the book where the guys are sitting around the garage playing card games, waiting for it to start snowing before they can go out and snowplow. And I say, "We don't do that. We don't sit around playing card games." But besides that, it's a fun story to read locally, so thank you all.
Thank you, Gary. All right, moving to item number nine, which is approval, waive formal bidding for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing Contract. Who's got this one?
I do, I do.
Oh, City Services.
Go ahead.
That's fine. Yeah, this one's waive the bid process because there was no bids accepted or submitted, sorry. Bids were put out on March 1st. By March 18th, nothing was received. So Public Works reached out to several contractors, and one submitted a bid. That would be the Claus Brothers, and I believe that's the next one.
That would be the next item on the agenda.
So we need approval to waive the formal bidding process. I make a motion we approve the waiving of formal bidding for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing Contract.
Second. Moved by Alderman Malley, second by Alderman Sulfah for the motion to waive the formal bidding process for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved, twelve yes, no, no, two absent. All right, then we're moving to 10, which is Resolution 22-052-R, authorizing execution of a one-year contract with Claus Brothers Incorporated for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing. Alderman Malley?
Yeah, that's, as I spoke about before, I did mention Public Works, but it's actually Community Development. This has to do with mowing abandoned or non-maintained properties. And as I said before, there were no bids. Staff reached out, got Claus Brothers to bid it, and I move that we approve the Resolution 20052-R, authorizing execution of a one-year contract with Claus Brothers for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Malley, second by Alderman Beck for the approval of Resolution 22-052-R for the one-year contract for the Claus Brothers for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll, please.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item number 11, which is approval of pyrotechnic permit for Reverie 675. Who's got this one? Chief, you want to talk about it?
Sure. Good evening, council members. First, I want to apologize for the late notice on this. We got a late request just the day after the last Cow meeting, so from the owner and wedding planner of the new venue, Reverie 675, Shuki Moran. This is a new facility down on the old VFW property. For some of you who've been around for a while, known as the Hangar. This pyrotechnics display is what we consider a small display. It's being put on in conjunction with their grand opening this Friday, May 6. It's being done by a licensed contractor within not only the state of Illinois, but federally licensed because it is pyrotechnics which are considered explosives. So we do have a federal explosives license permit that is to date, along with a state permit to date, and a licensed operator through the state Fire Marshal's Office. We also have a letter from the property owner, which is the VFW, permitting the use of the pyrotechnics display. And those of you who are, most of you, who are familiar with the VFW's property, it is caducous for this particular use. It's a small display. The largest mortars would be a three-inch mortar, which requires about 286 radius feet for this use. There's plenty of property down there, and across the river, it's right on the river, and across the river, there's no immediately adjacent homes to this area. And as you know, along Route 25, it's more of an industrial area. So this would be an evening, evening display. It would only last 10 to 20 minutes at most, and we will have a fire unit down there standing by in case there are any problems for this.
Thank you. Somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant a pyrotechnic permit for Reverie 675 for May 6, 2022.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Connolly for the pyrotechnic permit for reverie at 675 on Friday night. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved, twelve yes, no, no, two absent. All right, then we're moving to 10, which is Resolution 22-052-R, authorizing execution of a one-year contract with Claus Brothers Incorporated for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing. Alderman Malley? Yeah. Yeah, that's, as I spoke about before, I did mention Public Works, but it's actually Community Development. This has to do with mowing abandoned or non-maintained properties. And as I said before, there were no bids. Staff reached out, got Claus Brothers to bid it, and I move that we approve the Resolution 20052-R, authorizing execution of a one-year contract with Claus Brothers for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Malley, second by Alderman Beck for the approval of Resolution 22-052-R for the one-year contract for the Claus Brothers for the 2022 Code Enforcement Abatement for Lawn Mowing. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll, please.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item number 11, which is approval of polytechnic permit for Reverie 675. Who's got this one? Chief, you want to talk about it?
Sure. Good evening, council members. First, I want to apologize for the late notice on this. We got a late request just the day after the last Cow meeting, so from the owner and wedding planner of the new venue, Reverie 675, Shuki Moran. This is a new facility down on the old VFW property. For some of you who've been around for a while, known as the Hangar. This pyrotechnics display is what we consider a small display. It's being put on in conjunction with their grand opening this Friday, May 6. It's being done by a licensed contractor within not only the state of Illinois, but federally licensed because it is pyrotechnics which are considered explosive. So we do have a federal explosives license permit that is to date, along with a state permit to date, and a licensed operator through the state Fire Marshal's Office. We also have a letter from the property owner, which is the VFW, permitting the use of the pyrotechnics display. And those of you who are, most of you, who are familiar with the VFW's property, it is conducive for this particular use. It's a small display. The largest mortars would be a three-inch mortar, which requires about 286 radius feet for this use. There's plenty of property down there, and across the river, it's right on the river, and across the river, there's no immediately adjacent homes to this area. And as you know, along Route 25, it's more of an industrial area. So this would be an evening, evening display. It would only last 10 to 20 minutes at most, and we will have a fire unit down there standing by in case there are any problems for this.
Thank you. Somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant a pyrotechnic permit for Reverie 675 for May 6, 2022.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Connolly for the pyrotechnic permit for reverie at 675 on Friday night. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?